I'd like to call this special meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski.
President.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Rianis.
Here.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, Mrs. Riska. Ms. Sarowski did call me before the meeting to say she was stuck in traffic coming from her job, and she would be here just as soon as possible, so she should be here any minute, and will join these presentations as they are beginning. But with that, council, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This is a special city council meeting for the purpose of recognizing and congratulating recipients of scholarship awarded through the 2019 Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation Scholarship Program. We have a presentation from the foundation president, Dr. Martin Brown. Dr. Brown.
Thank you so much, Mayor Taylor, council, and all of our distinguished scholarship recipients and families. Welcome to the special meeting tonight. We're so pleased and excited each year to present Scholarship Day, and the foundation began, as many of you know the history, some don't, back in 1990, and we were formalized in 1991. And yours truly, along with our director Carl, who you'll meet shortly, were here from day one, founding this organization and building it up. We've given hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships over the years, and we wish we could give so many more, and we wish all of you congratulations in advance and success. So I won't go on about the program, just to say that we have three major areas that we deal with, and Carl will delve into it in a moment, but it's educational and recreational and cultural, and these are our three purviews. So we're so pleased to have scholarships as a major part of the foundation's good work on behalf of the community for the past many years. So I now would turn this over to the executive director of the foundation, Carl Uscoian.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, council members, and city manager Vanderpool. Again, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation Scholarship Award Program with our community. As Dr. Brown said, I'm Carl Uscoian. I am the executive director of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, which is celebrating its 28th year serving this great community. On behalf of the foundation, we welcome you to our 21st annual scholarship award ceremony. As Dr. Brown just said, the foundation was established in 1991 to strengthen the quality of life of all Sterling Heights area citizens. We do this through three major categories: cultural, educational, recreational. Obviously, here, we're today about educational. The foundation strives to do this by reaching a wide segment of the community and by helping to foster a community-wide philanthropic environment through partnership and collaboration with area businesses, companies, organizations, and many other nonprofit organizations. So this partnership effort that we strive so hard for is clearly evident here today, as our nine scholarship partners are awarding a total of 24 scholarships worth $24,000. The organizations awarding scholarships this evening are BAE Systems, Ford Motor Company, and the Ford Motor Company Foundation, Friends of Tom Kroll, General Dynamics Land Systems, the McComb County Chiropractic Association, the former mayor Richard J. Nady Endowment for Government Public Service, the Rotary Club of Sterling Heights, and the Selfridge Air National Guard Base Community Council, and of course, the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation itself. Now, your foundation began awarding scholarships in 1999, and with this evening's awards, we have presented scholarships totaling $393,000 to 445 area students pursuing degrees in general studies, technical training programs, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, healthcare, and public service fields. We're very proud of that. Each year, the foundation receives hundreds of scholarship applications. Scholarships are awarded based upon our sponsors' unique requirements, which include academic performance, but they also include leadership, community service, career plans, and also need. Now, the foundation looks forward to this program every year, as I know you do too. We're proud to support our community's finest students continuing their academic growth. We have many of our foundation board members here this evening. I'd like to introduce those that I see. Doug Danning, Principal Danning and Gray; Melanie Davis, the CEO and president of the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce; Mr. John Bosomowski, President of McComb Intermediate School District; Dr. Martin Brown, President of the McComb County Chiropractic Association; President of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation; and recently passed President of Sterling Heights Rotary; Michael Nady. I think that I missed anybody. I think we got us all. Thank you. All right. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce you, foundation director and chairman of the scholarship committee for the foundation, John Bosomowski. John?
Thank you, Carl. Mayor Taylor, members of the city council, I would like to address the audience. If you forgive me, I might turn my back to you partially. Ladies and gentlemen, honored students, welcome to the scholarship awards presentation. On behalf of our scholarship selection committee, I congratulate each of the 21 students we are honoring this evening. Now, the scholarship selection committee members have read your application, evaluated your transcripts, and selected you from a very large and a very excellent applications as a winner of our 2019 college award scholarship. For your information, our scholarship program sponsors are local companies, businesses, and individuals who provided the monetary awards that you will be receiving this evening. They also set the demanding requirements that you have met to win their awards, and you certainly did meet all of the requirements. Now, each of you have outstanding credentials. You all achieved a very high scholastic grade point average, and many of you recorded an over 4.0 grade point average. This is very impressive. You participated in many schools and community activities, and very often you took on a leadership role. Now, this is also very commendable. You expressed a strong desire to continue your education, and you set some very high expectations for yourself. You have made your parents, grandparents, brothers, and sisters very proud of you, and the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation directors are very proud of you. Now, it's time to present our scholarship awards, and this is how we propose to operate. I will introduce the scholarship sponsor company representative, who will announce their winners. When students, please come forward as your name is called to accept your award, and then remain near the podium until all the sponsors' awards have been presented. At the conclusion of each sponsor's presentation, we will take a group photo, and then you may return to your seats. Now, the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation is thankful to its nine sponsoring partners, who continue to demonstrate their passion for education and community support each year through this program. Our first scholarship award is the Selfridge Air National Guard Base Community Council, and the Selfridge Base Community Council member this year will award one $1,000 scholarship to a student of military parents attached to the Selfridge Air National Guard Base. And so it is my honor to introduce Dr. Keith DeFeever, Bay Area family physician and past president of the Base Community Council. He will present his first award, so please join me in welcoming Dr. Keith DeFeever. Doctor?
Mr. Mayor and council members and distinguished guests in the audience here. The Base Community Council has been doing this for a number of years now. We paired up with the scholarship program, the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, I'd say about nine or 10 years ago, and our organization has been around for about 70 years. It started back in 1950, at a time right after World War II, and just as the beginning of the Korean conflicts and Korean War started, men and women soldiers were brought into Selfridge. A lot of turmoil going on in the country at that time. The city fathers felt it was important to bring in or to create an environment for the soldiers where they could feel like there was a community. We have continued to that now here 70 years later. The base went from Army to Air Force, and now it is a National Guard. The importance in that is the National Guard means that these are men and women soldiers who are your neighbors. They may be your banker, they may be your baker, they could be your school teacher. There's a lot of jobs, maybe your mechanic, and when duty calls, they drop everything and they go and fight the wars that they are asked to fight. So we are here to support them, and a lot of times, the family, when there are deployments, especially prolonged periods of time. So this scholarship was born out of, we have about 250, 300 business people in the McComb County who got together and said, hey, the future is our young people. So we formed this scholarship for someone, for a high school student whose parent or parents are attached somehow to Selfridge Air National Guard Base. So at this time, I would like to also thank John for helping us along with putting this whole program together. He's been a real stalwart individual who has been just a pillar of the community to keep us on track. At this time, we're going to present our award to Andrew Olmer. He is a senior at Eisenhower High School at Shelby Township. He graduates next month, intends to pursue a bachelor's of arts in the cinema studies and marketing at Oakland University. He's an Eagle Scout with many hours of voluntary community service, and his father is attached to the Selfridge Air National Guard Base. We wish him well in the future, and congratulations, Andrew.
a scholarship program sponsor for eight years and is awarding this evening two $1,000 scholarships to students pursuing undergraduate degrees in science, technology, engineering, and/or mathematics curriculums. I now invite Mr. Scott Davis, who is the vice president of programs for BAE Systems in Sterling Heights, Michigan, to award the BAE Systems awards. Scott?
Give Scott a good hand. Mr. Mayor and city council, it's a privilege to be here tonight, and I do want to thank the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation for such a great thing to do for our young folks. It's, when I got this invitation to come here, I was pretty excited, because I've always been a STEM guy, actively involved with scouts. Congratulations on your Eagle Scout. And so I was very excited to come here and make these presentations. We are, as they was said, presenting two scholarships tonight, but the first young man had another engagement, came here early, and we got photos, but it was Parker Srazinski, and Parker resides in Sterling Heights and is graduating from Henry Ford and the Utica Center for Math, Science, and Technology, and had a GPA of 4.19. Parker will attend Oakland University in the fall and pursue a degree in mechanical engineering, and looks forward to a career in the automotive industry. The second scholarship presentation, I'd like to invite Abigail Wolf, please. So a little bit about Abby. So she resides in Sterling Heights and is graduating from Henry Ford also, and the Utica Center for Science and Industry, with a GPA of 4.06 in June. And the one thing I talked about, Abby is going to attend Kettering University in the fall, and that's where my youngest son goes. He's a junior there, so that's a great connection. And she will also be pursuing a degree in mechanical engineering and looking to pursue a career in aerospace. So, pretty remarkable thing for a young lady to aspire to, and so we ought to all be very proud of her.
Our next awards this evening come from the Ford Motor Company and the Ford Motor Company Foundation. And Ford is a longtime sponsor of our scholarship program, and they are a longtime supporter of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation. As I mentioned earlier, we were stood up in 1991. Many of those formative meetings were in the Ford Sterling Heights plants, in particular, the Ford Van Dyke plant. So Ford's been there every step of the way, money-wise and leadership-wise, and we're very indebted to them. So this evening, they're going to award five $1,000 scholarships, again, to students pursuing a degree in the STEM field: science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And also, again, tonight, we're pleased to have represented from Ford Motor Company, from the Ford Sterling Axle Plant, and Mr. Gary Schmidt. Gary is responsible for quality control, quality assurance at the Ford plant. Gary, it's all yours.
Mr. Mayor, council, it's a pleasure to be here. You know, I was thinking about it. This is my second time being here, and I am a member of the community. I'm a member of Sterling Heights. I've lived here for the last 20 years. I have great neighbors like Mr. Vanderpool. His lawn's looking really good this year. Mr. Chris Martin, the fire chief, is in the neighborhood also, so it's kind of nice for me. You know, they drive by, we wave, we talk, so I'm pretty netted here in the community. Also, I look at these schools. I mean, my daughter, who is 32 now, graduated from Utica Ford, so, and I see some of the alma maters that I went to of Oakland University, so I'm really excited, and you all should be very proud of what your accomplishments are there. It's quite remarkable. So, let's get to them. So, I represent, right now, I'm going to be handing them out in relationship to the Ford Motor Company Scholarship Award Program. So with that to do, let's bring up Tyler Amato first. Okay, Tyler graduated from Stevenson High School in 2018 with a 4.01 grade point average and attends Oakland University, where I went, where he's enrolled in the School of Engineering and Computer Science with a grade point average of 3.9. He's a member of the Golden Grizzly Athletic Band, and he's pursuing a mechanical engineering degree. Congratulations. Next up is Luke Champ. Luke attends Henry Ford High School, the second. He has a 3.8 grade point average and was captain of the football team last season. Luke will be attending Alma College, excuse me, and studying business. He plans to pursue a career in marketing or sales. Congratulations. Next is Claire Murray. Claire attends Stevenson High School and the Center for Science, where she has taken many engineering-related courses, and received a certification of steel, TIG, and joint T welding. She has a 3.9 grade point average. Claire will be attending Grand Valley State University, pursuing a degree in electrical engineering. Amirin Shenavas. Did I say that right?
I'm sorry.
So Amrin attends Sterling Heights High School. She has a 3.93 grade point average and is a member of the junior leadership of McComb. Amrin will be attending the University of Michigan Dearborn to obtain a degree in mechanical engineering. Congratulations. And the last recipient is not here tonight. It was Zachary Verbrack. I'll just read through what his accomplishments were. He attended Stevenson High School. He has a 4.07 grade point average and is a member of the Thunder Chickens First Robotics.
Yeah.
Zachary will be attending Wayne State University and pursuing a mechanical engineering degree. He helps to work in the automotive.
a long relationship with another good, strong friend, General Dynamics Land Systems. General Dynamics Land Systems has been a generous supporter of our scholarship program since its very beginning in 1999. General Dynamics will be awarding four $1,000 scholarships this evening to, again, high school students pursuing degrees in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And I'm very proud of these awards. If I may just give you a little segue, I played an integral role in developing them as I started an endowment fund managed by the foundation during my 35 years at General Dynamics Land Systems. And it's just a testament to how endowments work. Every year, every year, kept putting money into it, earmarked for this, and so, and that's what we do with the community foundation. We manage 26 endowment funds right now. Well, I never have to go to General Dynamics anymore, asking them for money for scholarships, because our endowments now have grown to be the largest endowment that we manage, and it gives off earnings every year, and now we give it back to the community in form of to young people who are going to make our community even a greater place to live. So I'm very proud of that. So thank you for indulging me on that. So all of our award winners this evening reside in Sterling Heights. First, we have Kate Barber. Kate? Congratulations, Kate. Kate, let me tell you a little about Kate. Will be graduating from Sterling Heights High School with a GPA of 3.69. Kate will attend Kettering University. Well, Kate, I gotta tell you, I graduated from Kettering University. It was called General Motors Institute. And I need to tell you something else. I have three children, and they all graduated from Kettering University. So you're going to a good place. Right, Scott? Okay. She's going to become a mechanical engineer. Congratulations, Kate. Next, we have Trevor Drum. Trevor?
Thank you.
Congratulations, Trevor. Trevor will be graduating from Adley Stevenson High School with a GPA of 3.98. Trevor will attend Oakland University in the fall, and he's going to pursue a degree in information technology, working toward a career in cybersecurity. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Our next awardee is Megan Modrak, and she isn't with us this evening, because she is at my math, science, and technology graduation ceremony this evening. So that comes first, and that's good, but we can still award her money. So she'll be graduating from Henry Ford II High School and the Utica Center for Math and Science and Technology with a GPA of 3.98. Megan will attend...
Kettering University.
...to pursue a degree in mechanical engineering with a manufacturing emphasis. You two should get together. Our last award winner this evening is Ray Owen. Ray, you hear? There she is. Congratulations, Ray. Ray is graduating from the Utica Academy for International Studies with a GPA of 3.97. Ray will attend Grand Valley State University in the fall to pursue a degree in biology towards her pre-med program, towards her goal of become a pediatrician specializing in neonatology. Congratulations. That was a test. partner of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, is our own Dr. Brown. Dr. Brown, you want to tell us a little bit about the McComb County Chiropractic Association?
So now I'm speaking in my capacity as president of the McComb County Chiropractic Association, and I'm pleased to announce that our association has raised funds to contribute another five $1,000 scholarships this year. Chiropractic is a natural approach to health, emphasizing the integrity of the spine and the central nervous system. Chiropractic care uses only natural methods, including spinal adjustments and therapies, avoiding any medications or injections or surgery. Chiropractic care may benefit numerous neuromusculoskeletal conditions, including back and neck pain, headaches, sciatica, numbness, tingling, shooting pain in the limbs, and more. Chiropractic care is a safe and an effective health approach for many ailments. Please contact our association if you do require a referral to a member doctor of chiropractic who subscribes to our code of ethical conduct. And now the names of our scholarship recipients. The first one is Alexander Awad of Sterling Heights. He's currently pursuing his doctorate in chiropractic, attending Life University in Georgia. He plans to complete the graduate program in March of 2020, and he intends to return to Michigan to practice his profession upon graduation. We wish Alexander all the best in the future. Now, the second recipient is Jack Baranski, and I believe Jack is present. Good. He is a senior at Frazier High School, and Jack will graduate in June, and he intends to continue with his undergraduate studies at Hope College, and then he'll pursue his post-grad studies to earn his chiropractic doctorate degree following his graduation. That'll be in 2022. So Jack ultimately plans to practice chiropractic here in Michigan, and we wish you much success in the future, Jack. And our next recipient is Mackenzie Cook, and she is from Sterling Heights. And Mackenzie, step right up. She'll graduate from Cusino High School in June, and she'll study first for her nursing degree at Sienna Heights College before enrolling at the New York Chiropractic College. Mackenzie has many honors and accolades in academics and varsity basketball, but she stated that she is most proud of her volunteer work helping the elderly. We wish you best wishes for the bright future, Mackenzie. And Stephanie Demick, although Stephanie is not present, she has a contingent with her family is here. On her behalf, she's currently a student at Palmer College of Chiropractic West in California, and she's there in San Jose, so she sent her mom and her dad and her sister, and she's pursuing her doctorate currently with plans to graduate in September of 2021. She intends to be part of a multidisciplinary health and wellness facility upon her graduation, and congratulations to Stephanie and to her family. And the fifth of our chiropractic scholarship recipients is Rachel Fiori, and Rachel is here. And Rachel is a senior at Anchor Bay High School, and she'll graduate in June. She's been working locally at Bassett Family Chiropractic. She plans to attend Life University in the Atlanta area after earning her area after earning her bachelor's program in exercise science. She plans eventually to open her own chiropractic practice. Congratulations, Rachel. So now we'll do the picture.
Well, next, we have an award that's the result of one of our donor-advised endowment funds, and it's in honor of the dedicated service of longtime iconic Sterling Heights Mayor Richard Noddy. I'm honored to introduce a board member and his son, Michael. Michael?
On behalf of the memory of my father, I'm proud and very honored to be here tonight to present his public service award to Natalie Schmidt, who resides in Sterling Heights and is graduating from Sterling Heights High School next month. Natalie will attend Saginaw Valley State this fall to pursue her bachelor's degree. We wish her the best success in college. Congratulations. My dad would be very proud of you, Natalie.
Well, next, we move to the Rotary Club of Sterling Heights, and the Rotary Club is also a very longtime supporter of the foundation scholarship program. This year, the Rotary Club is awarding two $1,000 scholarships to Sterling Heights residents who are high school or college students. Presenting the Rotary Awards again is Foundation President and Rotary President, Dr. Martin Brown.
Thank you. I'm not trying to steal the stage. We did invite the current Rotary Club President, and he was delayed, I guess, so we won't delay the program. But in my capacity as a board member and three-time past president of the Rotary Club of Sterling Heights, I do take great pleasure in presenting the scholarship awards from the Rotary Club. Rotary International was founded in 1905, and the Rotary Club of Sterling Heights was founded in 1969. So what is that, 48 years ago somewhat? The primary goal of Rotary is to make the world a better place, and we do a wide variety of community service projects, both locally and internationally. We serve autistic and other special needs children. We promote literacy. We provide holiday food baskets for the needy. We do water projects in Benaua in the Dominican Republic, where pure water is lacking. We work to build park trails and to enhance city parks. We serve students and host leadership training events. We help local individuals in many special need situations. Rotary is much more in addition to the scholarships that we give. The Rotary scholarships are for qualifying Sterling Heights students devoted to community service. We have two winners, and our winners this year first is Amanda Amato, and Amanda is here. She's a senior at Stevenson High School with a 3.99 grade point average. She was just cheated out of that .01. Anyway, she'll attend Oakland University with an anticipated graduation date of 2023. She's been very active in a variety of extracurricular and community service activities, including the Breast Cancer Walk, Gleaner's Food Bank, My Doctor's Inn, Blessings in a Backpack, Relay for Life, church activities, and more. She does epitomize the Rotary Club's emphasis on community service, and she's well-deserving of the Rotary Club Scholarship. Congratulations, Amanda. And we have Amit Toodin, and Amit is here. He's a senior at Sterling Heights High School with a 4.024 grade point average. And Amit has been very active in volunteer work with the Autistic Play Place here in Sterling Heights, among other volunteer work and extracurricular activities, and he will attend Wayne State University, pursuing a pre-medical program of study, intending to become a pediatrician following his medical school graduate studies. He's eager to serve, and Amit has multiple glowing letters of reference from his teachers. We wish Amit all the best in his bright future. Congratulations.
Congratulations to you. Next this evening, we have another donor-advised award. This is the Tom Kroll Scholarship, created by Utica Community Schools alumni. This award of $1,000 goes to one Utica Community School student in honor of Tom Kroll. Tom was a retired Utica Community Schools teacher and wrestling coach. So I'd like to introduce Melanie Davis, President and Chief Executive Officer of the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce, who will present the award.
Thanks, Carl, and thanks again to our mayor and council and our city staff that are here with us tonight. It really means a lot to have your support, as I and my foundation colleagues are here to honor and recognize these very deserving students. And when I say very deserving, I mean, it's incredible. When I was meeting with the foundation board recently, I said, you know, it's really difficult. It's a difficult job when you are trying to choose a recipient, and it's among students that have a four-point, you know, you're comparing somebody with a 4.12 and a 4.13. I mean, it's, so all of the students that are here should be very, very proud. It was a tough, tough choice. But in the end, we decided that the Tom Kroll Scholarship this year would go to Gabriella Andrajuska. I think she had to go, but I think her mother is still here with us in the audience tonight over here, so welcome. And Gabriella is from Sterling Heights. She's a 2019 graduate from the Utica Academy of International Studies. She holds a 4.22 GPA and is also an active community volunteer while also serving in many different leadership roles for several of her school clubs and sports. She plans to attend Central Michigan University, she told me earlier tonight when I was talking to her, and she wants to study neuroscience in the hopes of becoming a neonatologist in the future. So congratulations again to Gabriella. So I'm also going to announce our final awards this evening on behalf of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation. We will be awarding three $1,000 scholarships to students pursuing college degrees or vocational training. The first of our award recipients from the community foundation tonight is Adi Asho, as I hope I pronounce it right. Adi? Okay, come on up. Adi will graduate from Sterling Heights High School in June. He also has a 4.22 grade point average, and he plans to pursue medicine as a career at Wayne State University. He's been active in a wide variety of extracurricular activities in addition to his studies. So congratulations, Adi. Next up, we have Brian Ruba. Fun fact, his father Rich was my real estate agent and sold me my house in Sterling Heights. Brian is a senior at Stevenson High School, and he will graduate in June. He has a 3.86 grade point average, and he is very active in sports, having played on the Stevenson Football Team and Baseball Team, both for all four years. He has also played Federation Travel Baseball for eight years. He has excelled in multiple AP courses, and he has been awarded as an AP Scholar in both 2017 and 2018. He has performed community service at McGrast and at local elementary schools. Brian was highly acclaimed by his school principal as well on his scholarship application, so congratulations, Brian. Thank you. And last up, we honor tonight Alyssa Tranquita. She is a senior at Stevenson High School with a 3.96 GPA. She plans to attend Central Michigan University to pursue a degree in elementary education. Alyssa has been very active in a wide variety of extracurricular activities, including the Varsity Dance Team, president of Future Educators Rising Club, the National Honor Society, Student Council, and other activities. Alyssa received several excellent letters of faculty recommendation raving about her high school activities. Congratulations, Alyssa, and congratulations to all of our other awardees tonight.
Congratulations. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that's it. So please join me in giving a rousing congratulations to our 24 scholarship award recipients this evening. Now, we're going to take one big happy family picture. So I'm going to invite the mayor, city manager, and council members to come down front. Right? Yeah. Melissa, you want to go up on top, if you will? And award winners, once the mayor and city council are in place, I'd like you all to come up and join them on that side right here. Yep. Want to turn around this way? All award winners and all sponsors, all sponsors, we're going to have to, now. Okay, who's taking? Melissa, you got it. Now, you're going to have to tell me how to, we're going to have to curl here, so. Let's get as tight as we can, try to find, oh, let's try to give it a sort of a crescent shape, moon shape there.
You guys need to get him more, or like come in the front.
Are you good, or do we need to crunch a little more? A little tighter. Let's act like we're all good friends. That's it, everyone. Congratulations. Thank you all.
Got to go bad.
You're right, they never happen. Usually we hide them in the corner.
They're going to hit on 14 mile.
We lose fire? Okay, council, we do have a resolution here. So we do have a resolution here. Before we, we are too far off. There's a suggested action. Is there anyone on council who'd like to make that motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
If I could find it. Resolve to recognize and congratulate the 2019 recipients of scholarships awarded through the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation Scholarship Program, and to thank the partners BAE Systems, General Dynamics, Ford Motor Company, Macomb County Chiropractic Association, the family of Richard J. Noddy, Rotary Club of Sterling Heights, Southridge Air National Guard Base, Community Council, Sterling Heights Community Foundation, and the Utica Community Schools alumni for their continuing generosity and support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Schmidt?
I would only cry.
Anyone else? If none, then just congratulations again to all the award recipients, and we will watch with anticipation to see how your careers unfold, hopefully here, giving back to the community that's giving to you. So with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to discuss any item not on our agenda tonight? If not, council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. We will return in about 10 or 12 minutes for the start of our regularly scheduled city council meeting.